All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our, wait, no, we did have a meeting, I guess, on Saturday. So, our second meeting of February, Tuesday, February 6th. And I will have our city clerk start with our roll call.
Mayor Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
I'm going to move that for her to be excused.
Second.
Councilmember Kent Trine. Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Roshianna O'Farrell.
Great, thank you. I think we have, hopefully, some other council members on the way. The retreat has thrown us off.
Mayor, could you just vote on that excusal then?
Yes, she's gonna, yeah, sorry.
I move that we give an excused absence to Pamela Stewart.
Okay.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, so we do have a quorum of 4-0. Okay, next up, we have our flag ceremony and pledge of allegiance with Cub Scout PAC 679.
May the audience please rise. Color guard, post the colors. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
All righty. Totally forgot that Councilmember O'Farrell asked to be excused, so I move that we excuse Councilmember O'Farrell.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, so now we are 5-0 because Councilmember Trine is also here, just to make note for the record. All right, thank you, Cub Scout PAC 679. Next up, we have our land acknowledgement. I can go ahead and read that. We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Next up, we have public comment. We'll start in the room if we have any, and then we will move online. And just as a note, last Saturday, we did have, I guess, the council rules. Are we gonna adopt those today, or did we already approve?
Those will be brought to you at your February 20th regular meeting.
Awesome, all right. So, if anyone signed up probably by today, then we'll do online. Is there anyone in the room? All right, did anyone sign up?
Hello, city council members. Paul Stickney, my Zoom made me rejoin. I actually don't have anything to say on today's agenda, other than I support Arch. I just want to tell you, I enjoyed watching the retreat, and I know that would take a lot out of you. That was a lot of hours, but covered a lot of ground. So, anyway, have a good meeting.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? All right, great. So that will do it for this evening. Next up, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on that one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. So first up, we have a proclamation for Girls in STEM Day, so we're gonna read the proclamation, and then we would love to get a photo with you both. So, Councilmember Gupta.
Whereas, the City of Sammamish recognizes the critical importance of fostering diversity and inclusivity in all fields, including science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And whereas, women and girls have historically been underrepresented in STEM professions, and addressing this gender gap is vital for the advancement of our community and society as a whole. And whereas, the City of Sammamish acknowledges the achievements and contributions of local women scientists, engineers, and STEM professionals who have made significant impacts in their respective fields. And whereas, promoting and encouraging girls to pursue STEM education and careers will lead to greater innovation, creativity, and progress for our city and beyond. And whereas, initiatives like Girls in STEM Day play a crucial role in inspiring and empowering young girls to explore and excel in STEM disciplines. And whereas, the City of Sammamish is committed to supporting programs and organizations that aim to bridge the gender gap in STEM and create equal opportunities for all. And whereas, the City of Sammamish encourages schools, businesses, and community organizations to organize and participate in the activities and events that promote STEM education for girls. And whereas, the City of Sammamish will declare February 10th, 2024, as Girls in STEM Day to raise awareness about the importance of encouraging girls to pursue education and careers in STEM fields. Now, therefore, be resolved that Mayor Kaylee Clark, on behalf of the Sammamish City Council, does hereby proclaim February 10th, 2024, as Girls in STEM Day.
Great, thank you. All right. Next up, we have our proclamation for Random Acts of Kindness Week. Whereas, the City of Sammamish recognizes and values the simple acts of kindness performed without prompting of reason, and how these acts can positively impact the performer, the participant, and the enlakers of the good deed. And people of any age can participate in random acts of kindness at any time, any place, and for the selfless purpose of spreading goodwill. And by providing random acts of kindness and reaching out to one another, regardless of social or economic status, education, gender, origin, religious belief, age, lifestyle, or abilities, we extend an opportunity for grace, dignity, and acceptance that might otherwise not be offered. And kind individuals can create a more caring community and help to perpetuate genuine acts of kindness within their city, state, and even throughout the world. And we seek to cultivate thoughtful and compassionate residents by teaching the youth to make a difference through random acts of kindness. And Random Acts of Kindness Week is a celebration of simple kindness that encourages people to tap into their own human spirit and share kindness with one another, thereby nourishing and strengthening our community. Now, therefore, I, Kaylee Clark, Mayor of Sammamish, and on behalf of Sammamish City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of February 11th through 17th as Random Acts of Kindness Week in the City of Sammamish, and ask residents of our community to join with me to recognize and perform random acts of kindness. All right. Now it looks like we have David and Audrey. Great. We're gonna go to an update for monthly council projects. Comp plan, town center, critical areas, all the things.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Council. David Pyle, Community Development Department. I'm here with Audrey Starcy, our Public Works Director. We are here for the second major projects update of the year. We've reformatted the presentation a bit, hoping we've improved some of the readability of it, accessibility. And I'll just go ahead and get started. We've got quite a bit ahead of us. You can see here that we're noting who the lead department is on these. That's not to say that we are not working collaboratively on all of these items across departments. It just is the lead department as to who will be doing most of the presentation to council. We have a very full schedule this year, running all the way to the end of December, as we have several policy projects that are taking shape. Really happy to say that work is progressing on all of the projects, although we're still presented with some challenges at times. The first is the Transfer Development Rights Project. And if you recall, on Saturday, we talked about the Transfer Development Rights Project, really as the catalyst that will result in our implementing much of what we're trying to achieve across the Critical Areas Update, the Comprehensive Plan Update, and the Town Center Amendments. It's really a two-phase project. The first phase is where we are going to be doing an assessment of the current ILA, looking for barriers and opportunities with that ILA, working with the county on opportunities to improve it. And then we'll come back later in the year, once we've learned from our Critical Areas Update, our Comp Plan Update, and our Town Center Amendments, as to what opportunities there are to make improvements to the program, and particularly within the city, an internal TDR program, if you will. So, the Planning Commission is presented with a workshop on the 15th. The council will have a workshop on March 12th. Really, the focus of those is the ILA, with the relationship with King County, what it currently provides, and looking for opportunities. The Critical Areas Update is moving along. I just wanna say, two weeks ago, we presented to the Planning Commission on the first phase of the work plan to, basically, we identified what we would like to change. We'll be doing that again with the second batch. There are six topical areas of Critical Areas. We did the first three at the last meeting. We're doing the next three on March 21st. Then we'll move ahead with starting to look at some solutions and work through those. With regard to the Comprehensive Plan Updates, we're currently in internal review. We are pulling together the different elements for public release, which we anticipate for the March 7th Planning Commission meeting, where we'll walk the commission through what's included, what's changed, and orient them to it. We'll then come back again in April, and we'll start to actually work through the different elements themselves. Eventually, the idea is to get this through the commission with a public hearing sometime in July, hopefully, and then get it out in front of the council after the August recess and in September, and then work through it with the council September through the end of the year. The requirement is that we update the Critical Areas, or excuse me, the Comprehensive Plan by the end of '24. So, we do have a timeline we're working against there. Another project is the Town Center and Code Amendment Project. This is one that we have really ramped up recently, and you'll be seeing a lot of that work accordingly. The Planning Commission will be having a workshop on the Town Center, where we'll be talking a lot about what opportunities we have for changes to the plan and the code to help better promote diverse and affordable housing types. That'll be followed by an open house here at City Hall, here in this room and out on the concourse out there, where we're inviting housing providers, builders who have built successful projects, policy partners like Arch, to basically help provide a learning opportunity for the community, and for us to learn from the community about the types of things that they might want to see here in the city, and what opportunities we have to change our codes and our policy and our code. We're really, really inspired. We've had a really great response from the building community, and they're volunteering to come up here and spend their time from builders who don't even have projects in the city. So, it's a really great opportunity to come and learn more about diverse and affordable housing types, and some of the barriers to delivery of those types, and also about what it can bring to the community, and what benefit it can provide in the community. Finally, we'll be back to the City Council on March 5th for a workshop, where we'll continue on with the discussion around the Town Center Plan and Code, and what changes we could possibly make. And that will continue through the year. The next topic is the transit plan. I'll turn it over to Audrey.
Good evening, Council. Thank you, David. As you're aware, we are well on our way to completing the city's very first transit plan. We're very excited to bring that plan in its entirety to council on March 5th. We plan to present the plan, as well as open the public hearing. We will keep the public hearing open through March 19th, and ask council to consider adopting the plan on March 19th as well. Very excited about this plan, and as we discussed on Saturday a little bit, projects from this plan will be folded into our TIP for some near-term improvements, as well as our 20-year list that'll reside in our Transportation Master Plan that will accompany our transportation element, all of work which David described for our Comprehensive Plan Update, so it's all intertwined. This concludes the portion of our monthly update this evening. Happy to take any questions.
All right, Deputy Mayor Howe, and if Councilmember Lamb has her hand up, let me know, somebody, if they can see it.
Just a quick question about, you mentioned that, David, that there's gonna be, there was developer interest in coming to the open house. Did I understand that correctly?
That's correct. We reached out to some builders with projects that we know have been successful and are really good examples in the region.
Okay.
And they have agreed to come showcase their project for us here at the city as part of this open house, so people can learn about what was successful. We also want to talk about operation, you know, going forward, about how some of the various types of projects, whether, if it's a supportive housing-type project, or if it's a more deeply affordable-type project. We want to make sure we're talking about, you know, some of the ins and outs of operation going forward as well, because we're gonna be partners for the long run.
And so, they'll be bringing images and pictures, correct?
That is my understanding, and I will verify with the team.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Trine.
Excuse me, David, the, can you bring up the slide that had the Planning Commission draft reviews, I believe? The dates on those? Sorry, I didn't get them written down. One before this. That's it, March 7th, April 4th, April 18th. And that's where, excuse me, go ahead.
That's where the Planning Commission will initially take up the Comp Plan. And the idea is that on the 7th, March 7th, we're going to be spending some time orienting them as to the process. It's a lot of material, and we want to make sure we all understand what's included. We'll walk them through what they have in the draft. We'll talk about large, you know, high-level changes that are being made, and we'll also allow for opportunity to, for them to ask questions about, you know, the process we'll use to go through it systematically, and allow their review and feedback on it.
And that will include the three new elements? Is it three or four? Well, depends on how we're gonna draw.
Two new elements, yeah. Climate change and resiliency, and economic development.
And economic, yeah. Okay. And that, is that a good opportunity for, so, I guess, one of our goals is for the public to be a part of this process? Is this an opportunity that the public should be taking April 7th, or March 7th, April 4th, and April 18th to be a part of making public comments towards those things, or being a part of that?
Absolutely. So, first of all, the meetings are all recorded, so if anybody misses one, they could go back and watch it, and we'll be making sure with every agenda bill to publish the prior meetings. We'll have a meeting tracker, if you will. We anticipate the public hearing to take place sometime in July with the Planning Commission, so there's quite a bit of runway to that point in time, and there'll be several meetings. You're only seeing the meetings through April, however, you know, I could show you the comprehensive list through the year. There's quite a few meetings ahead. But yes, these would be the first meetings. I'd say the April 4th and 18th meetings are really where the conversation about the actual topic matter, the top, you know, the material will take place. The 7th is really more of an orientation meeting, and I don't know what opportunity there would be really to provide feedback at that point. It's, we'd rather, the opportunity to go through it and orient everyone on it, and then really try to provide targeted, focused comment on things.
And is Frameworks gonna be there, then, making that presentation?
Yes, they will.
Thank you. And then the second one was for Audrey, I think it's the next slide. On the Transit Master Plan is, so, does this, does the Transportation Master Plan, does that also go through the Planning Commission's process?
Yes, yes, that'll be going through Planning Commission, and the transportation element will be presented at the same dates that the Comprehensive, the rest of the elements will be presented to Planning Commission.
So that would be another opportunity for the public to engage, would be during those?
The TMP, in some ways, will be running parallel tracks in some pieces, and we're finalizing some of those dates.
Correct.
But the goals and policies will be presented at the same time as the Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
If I could follow Mayor and Councilmember Trine. I think one of the other pieces that David alluded to is, we could only fit through April on the screen, because there are so many touchpoints, and you will see as we get to a broader sort of outlook, we are packed out. And when I say packed out, I mean literally packed out, meeting to meeting through the end of the year. And we might be coming to you all to say, we might have to add a meeting or two to try to get through everything. So there will be ample opportunities between the Commission's work and the Council's work, and the other opportunities for folks to weigh in on all these pieces as we move forward.
Councilmember Lamb.
Hey, David. Will there be builders that will be at the open house that build at the lower end of income, like 0% to 30% AMI?
So my understanding is yes. We have builders that I think that have built both the lower end and the middle and the high, right? We have builders with a lot of diverse experience. We're also, we've also invited, and I can't recall, I've been, there's been a lot of flurry of activity on email about this, but I believe we have representatives from some housing authorities also attending that have a lot of experience in the more deeper affordability range. That was a really interest of ours, is to make sure we had that represented, as well as, you know, market-diverse housing, as well as some mixed housing projects. Just to see the array of different things that could, we could see, you know. We could foreseeably see a, a, no, a development, I don't wanna say a project, a development that is, you know, all affordable, that, you know, includes some supportive housing, and there's some really good examples of those. There was one that was proposed and is still in permit process in some, at some level in Kenmore, that you may have read about in the Seattle Times recently. That's a good example of a, of a project that includes very, you know, supportive housing, low-income housing, and mid-low-income housing.
That's great to hear. I look forward to meeting some of these builders. Thanks.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Great, well, thank you. Are you done, Audrey? Ah, awesome. See you soon. Yeah, have a good night. All right. Next up, we have our 2024 budget and work plan program for Arch.
So we are a bit ahead of schedule, not by a lot. We're waiting for Lindsay Masters, who's the Executive Director of Arch, to join us. So, may I suggest?
13 up.
If I may suggest, Council, I'm happy to take item 13 out of order, if that works.
All right, I move to amend the agenda, move item 13 to now.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Scott, RAP Act.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I'm pinching it a little bit for Mike Sugg here, but this is, as Council is aware, this is one of our legislative priorities, and K4C, which is the King County Climate Coalition, I think there's a couple more Cs I'm missing there, but proposed pulling a letter together in support of legislation that would implement the RAP Act in Olympia, and they're looking for jurisdictions to sign on. And while technically, we could have moved forward with that and signed on to it, because Council gave us direction, thought it was important to bring it, and so that other folks can see the letter and what it says, and get Council approval to sign on to that. I would also add, before you take any head nod or anything on that one, that as part of that, the legislative piece, I just want to highlight for Council, that we're going down to Olympia tomorrow. We have meetings with some or most of the delegation. It's at the point in session where they're hard to get, but we're, Deputy Mayor Howe, Councilmember Gupta, Mike and I are gonna head down and have those meetings. I emailed out to all of you the materials that we're taking down, so you can get a sense of what we're gonna talk about, and this is also an opportunity for us to share with the delegation all the work, like David was just referring to, all the work that we're doing as part of being a good sort of regional community member, and doing our parts to do our planning, and making sure that our components are in place. And some of the big pieces that Council has adopted in the last year, like our PROS Plan, Climate Action Plan, the Housing Diversification Toolkit. So, this is, this is our opportunity to go down there and hold those meetings, as many as we can get. We are gonna put some steps on the counter for all those of us that are gonna be down there, but I think this is a great opportunity for us to engage with our delegation. And then, later in the year, I think the goal would have to find a time for the delegation to come up here and engage with us where we are, and hear about what we're doing a little more, and maybe do, maybe do some walking around with us, or something along those lines. So, just wanted to share that out as part of signing on to the RAP Act letter. This is part of the legislative process, and that's where we are in advocating for city priorities. So with that, I would look for direction from Council on signing on to the RAP Act letter.
Great, thank you. I know I've seen emails from our surrounding cities signing on as well, so I don't know if anyone has questions or comments on this before. Do you want, vote, you said, vote or head nod?
Yeah, you can just vote, head nod is fine, as long as we just get Council, you know, head nod and move forward with it.
Yeah, I would love to sign on. Yeah. Awesome. All right. Yeah, great.
Fantastic.
Yeah, thank you, Scott.
And then, while we are waiting for Lindsay to arrive, Mayor, if, maybe if it works to be a little bit of a time filler, I could do a city manager report now.
Yeah.
Happy to, if Lindsay is in the building, I can pause it and pick it up later, but...
She is just getting into Sequoia 90, so she'll be here in about 15 minutes.
Cool. All right.
I just had one clarification on that letter. Do you need anything printed out right now, or no?
At the moment, no. I think, I think it's just, we can sign on behalf of them, use the mayor's electronic signature for the letter, and it's an email-in. Basically, we, what happens is we email our logo and the signature block, and they drop it into the letter.
Cool.
Because we're fancy these days, and we don't have to walk around and get hand signatures So, I wanna just talk about a couple of things, and...
Scott, before you, if you don't mind, Mayor, if it's all right. So, thank you. I support signing on to the letter. I just wanted to add real quick, just a nice thank you to fellow Councilmembers Howe and Gupta for taking the time out of their busy schedules to go down to Olympia and to represent the City of Sammamish. to represent the City of Sammamish. So I do appreciate my colleagues stepping up and doing that. So thank you very much, and it's muchly much appreciated.
So I want to share out a couple of pieces of things that are happening in the this weekend, and they're both related to the Lunar New Year event. So it is Lunar New Year this weekend at the Central Washington Building from 1 to 4, I believe it is. This is a great celebration, and as part of that, we are kicking off one of the first components of our 25th year anniversary Silver Jubilee, and this is the Time Capsule Video Booth. And so we will have a video booth set up. Rich in the back has graciously agreed to help us out. We're very thankful for him to be doing that. So the way it's going to work is there are three questions that they're video prompt questions, and they are: What is your favorite memory or experience of Sammamish? How has Sammamish shaped or influenced your life, and what makes it a unique place to live? And if you could send a message message to future generations who may view this video, what advice or insight would you share about life in Sammamish in 2024? So we will this video booth, there are four different events where the video booth will be, and it will culminate in at our main event Jubilee celebration, we will be showing the final video of those that participated. And then obviously, it will go on our social media and website for to and that that will be our time capsule for this 25th year Jubilee. So the other events are Earth Day on April 20th, Rigapalooza on May 11th, and of course, our Plateau on the 4th on July 4th. So really looking forward to having the community engage on that. And if I could make a pitch for Council members to encourage people that you know, whether you're at Lunar New Year, this event or the next events, to encourage people to go in and provide their answers and give us a robust time capsule and really get a snapshot of what people think about life in Sammamish in 2024. So we will be in the newsletter that will be coming out this month. There will be a full list of events that are related to our 25th Jubilee, so look forward to that in the newsletter. And then we will obviously have booths and things up at the farmer's market and all those other kinds of events. So looking forward to a really fun event schedule this year and for folks to come engage with us about our 25th anniversary. So looking forward to that. Couple other, just one other piece I just want to share out with Councilmembers. I had the opportunity to attend the Lake Washington School District Community Leaders' Breakfast. It was great to hear about all the diversity work that they are doing with their diverse communities and helping kids along through to get access to college and make it a more attainable piece. So it was great to hear all the work that they're doing and the things that they're doing in our community as well. So that was a nice event, and I think that is everything that I had for the moment. So apologies for speaking a little too quickly.
No, that's okay. I was going to ask, well, obviously, can we go off script for the video?
Mayor, I think Mayor and Council can go as off script as they want. In fact, we could probably do separate videos for each of you as a time capsule. Sure, we can work that out.
That's great. And then is there, of course, I would ask this, another opportunity if somebody cannot attend an event?
That's an interesting.
That could be a bigger question, yeah.
Yeah, you know, we can we can take a look at that. Hopefully, with four separate events, and we'll be out there for, you know, at least a couple hours, excuse me, for each one.
Yeah, or I guess if unable to physically, then if they could do like a video, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, oh, I see what you mean. Yeah, I mean, I think we I'm sure we can figure out a way to to take videos in. I would also share out that one of the other pieces that you will see coming out of the newsletter is we've already kicked off our photo competition and asked folks to submit photos, and the Arts Commission is going to help us curate a showing in concert with our Jubilee event. So encourage folks to submit their their amazing photos of Sammamish. I know people are taking them all the time, so really looking forward to seeing some of those great submissions from the community and then pulling, excuse me, pulling together a great showing that everyone can come participate in and and take a look at.
Awesome. Does anyone have any questions for Scott or comments? So we're waiting because you cannot start, is that right?
That's correct.
Awesome. All right. Does anyone have any verbal Council reports? Yeah, we could either do that or we could take a break. But if you want to talk, Deputy Mayor Howe.
Oh, I'd love to talk.
Yeah, please do. Yeah.
So I'll just give a quick update from a meeting with the Stokwame Tribe Council people. So with Josh, Suzanne, and Amelia, we're from the Tribal Council for Stokwame Tribe, and then there with Mary Lou Polly, the mayor from Issaquah. And the six of us sat down and just, we didn't have an agenda. We just started talking to each other. And it comes out that they're working on a curriculum that's going to deal with their history, because most of their history is, of course, oral history, and they're trying to find ways to capture it. And I said, well, gosh, you know, we have a university in Sammamish. If you need to trial it with a classroom, you know, with a series of lectures or something, you know, there might be an opportunity there. And they said, oh, well, we might want to do that. And then we talked about the fact that the Arts Council, our Arts Commission is doing a strategic plan, and so now I've got the contact for the tribal person to help us with the contractor in developing our plan around our our arts with kind of in alignment with what they can provide to us in terms of insight and information. And it so it was this one of these organic conversations that you didn't quite know where it was going to shift or turn, but there were all these touchpoints just through the entire hour and a half that we were together. And it was really clear that there's an opportunity for us to learn and to be smarter about the way that we interact with the sovereign nation, not treat it treat them like a stakeholder because they're not. And that's offensive, apparently. I learned the hard way. And so that that's one of those things where as you begin to, you know, expose yourself to a different culture and a different way of handling things, it's extremely beneficial, and it's a great opportunity to learn. And then what we're optimistic about doing is making sure that other Councilpeople are able to participate in this so that it's not just the information isn't siloed into one individual. So we're still working out a schedule so that as we can get other people to slipstream in and be able to participate, that's what we'll do. But they're extremely valuable touchpoints, and it was a terrific opportunity.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have anything? No, that's good. We could take a 10 minute. Oh, go ahead.
I'll just add one more piece, Mayor, if I may. I know some folks are aware, but I want to share out that as you may or may not know, the city and Sahali Golf and Country Club is hosting the LPGA Championship in June of this year, and they're they're excited about being here in town. The staff has been meeting with them to make sure that we get all the necessary pieces in place, but I think there are, for those that are interested, there are volunteer opportunities the week of the event. It's June 16th through 23rd this year, and just wanted to call that out. I think we're excited and happy to be hosting a nationwide event like that. It'll have national TV on it, and so they are excited about also sharing out that it's in the City of Sammamish, and I think that's a great sort of bookend to our 25th anniversary that we're we're going to be broadcasting nationwide the weekend of the the final weekend of the event as Sammamish, Washington. So I think that's a really fantastic thing. And if folks have interest in, there'll be more information coming out as we get a little closer about that, but wanted to share that out because it's coming up in not too long.
No, that's great. I think we'll be caddies, Council caddies. We'd be really good at that. All right, let's, do you think 10 minutes, David?
Yes, that should be right.
Awesome. All right. Council is going to take a break until 7:20. All right, welcome back, everybody. We are now going back to original item 11 for the 2024 Budget and Work Plan for Arch. So we have Lindsay and David.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, David Powell, Department of Community Development. With me this evening, I have Lindsay Masters, the Executive Director of Arch. We will be going through the Arch work plan and budget, be talking a little bit about the strategic plan that Arch has pulled together and some of the questions that's brought up about the the future work plan of Arch and the what the Executive Board will be needing to talk about here in the next few weeks, I think on the 14th, right? 15th, yeah. And then we will move into the Arch Housing Trust Fund. In accordance with the inter-local agreement, the City Council does need to approve the Arch work plan and budget and does need to approve the disbursement of the city's portion of the Arch House Housing Trust Fund account. Hopefully, I got that correct.
Yeah.
Great, so I'll turn it over to Lindsay. We have a presentation, and we have a some some points in the presentation where we will stop, and and I've I've prompted action. So we'll be looking at a motion to approve the resolution that adopts the the work plan and budget, and then there'll be another motion to make to approve the resolution that grants disbursement of the city's portion of the Housing Trust Fund dollars.
Thanks, David. So happy to be here tonight. I'm going to start talking about, if you go to the next slide, beginning with our budget and work program for 2024. And it's just an opportune time, actually, for us to give you an update on the strategic planning process, which is a part of that work plan that we've been expecting this year. And then we'll shift over to the trust fund. So you can go to the next slide. Just as a quick reminder, Arch has been around about 30 years now. We were established to help cities in East King County collaborate on affordable housing initiatives. Our mission is carried out through a range of different strategies and activities, which includes supporting cities with their policy and planning efforts, helping implement local investments of resources, so that's the trust fund program we'll talk about later, and then providing centralized staff that you can all utilize when you actually implement local housing programs. For example, some of the inclusionary programs you have in Sammamish, as well as assisting the public to sort of navigate the affordable housing opportunities here in the region. Next slide. High-level impact. We we try to summarize in kind of one slide what we've been able to produce through these collective efforts of all of our member cities. Collectively, you all have invested in over 6,000 affordable units now spread throughout East King County. We've leveraged your dollars over 10 to 1. So the combined resources of your investments have been able to attract lots of other public and private funding. And then we have also helped cities to carry out through local incentive and inclusionary programs, creation of another 2,900 units that have been integrated in market rate developments. Next slide. So just in a brief snapshot to talk about some of our work program priorities for this year, so not going all through all the details of the work plan, but happy to answer questions if there's any on those details. We did kick off a strategic planning process last year, and we're expecting that that would be wrapping up in 2024. I'll dive into that more in a bit. We're also kind of working with cities for the second year on comprehensive plan updates, continuing to provide housing data and other metrics to support your cities through that. There's also, as David is well familiar with, been lots of new mandates coming from the state level, and we've been trying to find strategic opportunities to to put resources together and help with some of those. This year, middle housing being one of those opportunities. We've also been assisting a certain number of cities to facilitate special projects, particularly near transit stations. Some of those are in some of the funding recommendations this year, which is great. We took up a policy issue starting last year and kind of wrapping up this year to help with the phenomenon of rent increases in affordable housing and how we can sort of better mitigate the impact of those on the residents within all of this important and needed housing that we've created. And then we've also took up this year sort of convening around legislative priorities related to housing. So happy to go into those more later, but I'll leave it at that for now. And then finally, this has been on our on our priority list since we started setting priorities, is our focus on monitoring efforts and making sure we're doing a good job overseeing all the contracts you have in place. Next slide. Just to talk a bit briefly about some of the activities specifically in Sammamish this year, a lot of planning work going on, and we're sort of trying to figure out the best way for Arch to support and and help with that. So we're expecting we'll provide some technical analysis around affordable housing provisions when that comes up. We worked in the last year with consultant team to develop a financial feasibility tool that would help our members to assess the relative value of additional development capacity that you might be creating in your city and what kind of trade-offs you could ask for in terms of affordable housing. We've been using that successfully in a few different cities so far. And then we also expect that if and when a housing development comes forward, we'd be assisting you with preparing the agreements and implementing those and monitoring the units that are created. So the the budget for this year is is primarily constant from last year with one exception, which was a request from City of Bellevue, which provides a lot of administrative services to us as the coalition. One of those is legal services, and they made a request for some additional funding so they can contract with outside counsel, get a little bit more help in the services they provide us. This year, Sammamish's portion of our budget is 194,000, which is about 8.6% of the total So here, I'll pivot over to the strategic planning update with a caveat that it's still a draft in process, under consideration by the board. We're collecting feedback, and there are was an interest, I think, in gathering feedback from Councilmembers as well and and questions. I'll dive into sort of the context, the process we've gone through, and kind of where we're at with the strategies, and then what comes next. So obviously, the big the big context is you don't, no one needs to explain this to you. There's a huge need. The need's growing fast, and then there are planning targets around particular levels of affordable housing that, as a region, we're really going to be challenged to meet. Collectively, in East King County, we need over 80,000 additional affordable homes at for people with low and low low and moderate incomes. That's the gap between our supply and what we have to plan for in the future. There's also just increasingly different levels of responsibilities for local jurisdictions around how we're planning for that. And again, more state mandates, potentially more this year, who knows, coming around how we go about meeting those. Specific to Arch, we also had, I think, a lot of hard work in recent years to kind of know where we're starting from as an organization. From 2020, 2019 to 2021, we undertook a few different consultant evaluations, looking internally at programs and policies, kind of right sizing our staff for the monitoring work, a broader analysis of our work program as it exists today and how we've staffed that and trends over time, a lot of interviews with stakeholders from housing developers to members, staff, and others. And then we also just celebrated our 30th anniversary, so had an opportunity to just look at what have we accomplished, where have been the successes and and whatnot. So feeling like we are well grounded in where we are as a coalition, understanding where we've been successful and where we've had challenges. we've been successful and where we've had challenges. In 2022, the board kind of kicked off this process and came together around a set of goals. One of those was the hope that we would be able to reaffirm commitments from our members to the coalition. Another was that we would get more clarity and strengthen the consensus on roles and responsibilities, so things that are appropriate for Arch to be working on. We would also, of course, like to have actionable strategies and kind of agreement on where we're moving forward and really wanting to take a look at how to prioritize resources and staff capacity. And another goal, I think, was figuring out how to expand engagement with city leaders, including elected officials. That's something that's been kind of an ongoing challenge for the organizations with constant change that happens every year with new folks coming in and figuring out how we best reintroduce Arch when there's new leaders and also kind of explore other roles for elected officials. So more to come on that. The process, as it stands today, was, so we established the goals. Last year, we kicked off the process formally. We hired a consultant. We named a planning committee, made up primarily of members of the board, including a mix of smaller and larger jurisdictions, as well as our community advisory board chair. And then we've held a couple of workshops with the board and cab chair, kind of going deep into a couple of issues. One, really setting kind of foundational elements around Arch's identity, our strengths and weaknesses. We also did some additional stakeholder engagement that I'll talk about more in a minute. We held a strategy workshop late last year to get the board really digging deep into the whole range of potential strategies, and then we've been able to draft something out of that that we'll talk about more. So currently, the board's reviewing those, and we're hoping we'll come together in the next month or so to finalize their recommendation. Just a word on stakeholder engagement. So as I mentioned, we had been doing quite a bit of that in the last few years, so we were building on those efforts. We also did an additional survey, got 116 responses from elected officials, property developers and managers, planning commissioners, public entity staff, and others. I will not go into all the weeds of what we heard, just to say it's a wide range of viewpoints, validate a lot of the things that we had heard over the years. Out of that, so again, we kind of, one of the goals of this process was really solidifying who Arch is, what our mission is, how we carry that out. We did expand on this mission statement a bit, so the headline is the same mission that Arch has had, but we've kind of elaborated on how we're carrying that out in some of these bullets below. We also tried to identify what are the real strengths that Arch brings as an organization, what makes us uniquely able to deliver superior programs and services. It boiled down to a few key things that say a lot, but one of those is sort of the effectiveness of a coalition versus a single jurisdiction trying to tackle housing on their own. Another is the particular expertise that our staff brings, it's really specialized expertise, and then really kind of the long-term trust in relationships and credibility we've built up by being dedicated to this issue for many years. We also took the board through an exercise of really trying to define the criteria that they wanted to use to screen what strategies we should pursue, what to prioritize. I won't go through all of these, but it was, I think, a well-thought-out process, good discussion. And then finally, we got to sort of, what are the pillars, what are the strategies that we want to focus on? We went through an exercise with the planning committee to say, what's the big question we want the plan to really be built around? The question they landed on was, how do we build more affordable housing faster? So it's not that we're not building it, but we're not keeping up necessarily with how fast the need is growing. So just going through kind of each of the areas, we had some, I think, important changes we're looking at making around governance and administration, some areas we think we can streamline decision-making processes. Again, we did want to help expand the engagement we're doing with elected officials. We see a lot of potential benefits from that. And we wanted to explore, I think we're not committing to specific changes in our governance structure, but we want to kind of take that on as a study and a thoughtful approach where we could explore potential changes either to the legal structure or, again, the governance structure and how elected officials participate in Arch. I should probably touch on the other few. I'll speed up a little bit. So another key area is a little more intentional focus on state and regional policy and funding. So some work that we do in a limited capacity now, but trying to put some new attention and energy into that. Continuing to support local policy and planning, but trying to create a bit more capacity and support for those cities that have unique development opportunities and that require, again, that specialized expertise to figure out how do you make use of surplus property, what are other local strategies to get development going on the ground. And then on the program implementation side, much of that is continuing sort of what we're trying to do now, which is being a really cost-effective vehicle for your local programs. There was a lot of discussion about what other programs and functions could we take on to support low and moderate income people living in the housing that we've created, and I think there was a thoughtful decision that we would really not want to branch out into a lot of other services, but if there are opportunities to partner in a way that's strategic with other groups to help meet those needs, that we could consider those. So for next steps, as far as implementation, the board is going to be finalizing the plan. And then how it gets implemented really is through the process we've always carried out our work, which is the board develops a more specific work plan and budget that determines how we can staff it and what resources go forward to carry it out. There's quarterly monitoring efforts that would be in place, and then it's not meant to be a static plan. It's really meant to be something that lives and breathes, and we are going to change it and adjust it as time, see what works, see what doesn't work, adjust it as time goes on. So I think that's it on the budget and work plan.
So thank you, Lindsay. So within your packet, you'll note that there is a question that prompts council to ask, where staff are asking for feedback on the strategic plan. And there are a couple of changes that we're noting as staff going forward. One is the, and this has been debated a little bit by the board, and I anticipate we will continue to debate it on the 15th, is what exactly is Arch's role and what does the City Council envision Arch's role is with regard to serving as a policy advisor or policy advocate? And that's something that did come out of the strategic planning work, is should Arch expand in its role to help really, I want to say, align viewpoints and help try to move some larger issues forward? Where we're kind of a little fragmented right now is to really help try to serve in a capacity to bring cities more into alignment on issues that will then be more effective in having our voices heard at the state level or at the county level. And so that's one question. But with that does come a potential increase going forward in the city's contribution to Arch, our share of potentially one new employee that would really start to help work on that, that specific goal of serving more as a policy advocate. And I want to make sure I got that right.
Yeah, I can add just a little bit more and happy to answer questions. I think we've been really careful not to use the word advocacy and that that, because it's interpreted in different ways and used different ways, where we see ourselves more as a, again, a convener and a facilitator and a policy resource for you. So it can mean a lot of different things, and I think we're really interested in the feedback around what's valuable. There are cities that have their own government affairs staff, who have people, you know, who have got a lot of, kind of a deep bench around this, and then there's other cities where they're looking for additional help. It could mean we help create talking points for issues that you want to support. It could mean we help you interpret and analyze bills that are going to affect your ability to create this housing at the local level. And I think, as David meant, it is an opportunity to help bring you together with your partners in the coalition to figure out what are the strategic policy issues, where you are aligned and you have some opportunity to, for you to advocate together, not necessarily for Arch to go out and advocate, you know, on our own.
All right, Councilmember Trine.
So a question of clarification. So, okay, what I understand Arch does right now for the City of Sammamish is that you monitor and take care of our low-income housing that's currently in the city. And so what you were just talking about right there, though, is about taking kind of a next step or a role in, you kind of backtracked a little bit on the policymaking of it, though. So help me understand that a little bit more, if you please.
Yeah, I'd say we've been involved in the implementation side for sure, and we've also been involved in local policy and planning work, so things that you're just working on, that it's under your control. What we've started to engage more in already, and I think is an area of more further opportunity and why it's part of the plan, is helping you to position around the policy issues happening at the regional and state level, which have a really big impact on your ability to determine policies at the local level. David, I don't know if you have other thoughts on that that you'd want to add.
Yeah, so we really appreciate the support that Arch provides with analyzing potential legislation in addition to our legislative advisors that we have as a city. And I think there's a partnership there and looking at all angles. One of the challenges, and I see it kind of as an opportunity challenge that the board has, is that the board's not always in alignment. Not all the partners are always in alignment, and there can be times when one partner maybe doesn't feel that their voice is as heard as others, and it becomes challenging. So that, I think, is one of the complexities of this, is that as we start to try to rally around certain topics and really get into alignment, there is the potential for some conflict. Because, and I don't mean that in a bad way, it's just more of like, we don't always all agree, and that's great, that's part of democracy, that's how we work, right? But we want to make sure that we have the right information and that we're all informed. I think that this approach is making sure we're all informed on the topic. One of the other challenges, and one of the things I appreciate about the strategic plan, is trying to engage and help build more of a relationship with elected officials. One of the challenges we're serving on the board is that we have a lot of conversation about policy-related items, regionally-related items, and then we have to report it back to the council and get feedback from the council and then go back to the board, and it can take a lot of time. And not all the cities are in alignment with their schedules. Sometimes a city might be, you know, have it as a priority and another city might not. So that's also a challenge. Generally speaking, you know, reading through the inter-local, one of the things that the inter-local appears to envision as the core roles of Arch was with regard to providing recommendations to parties regarding local and regional affordable housing policies, right? So that's sort of what we're talking about. Arch will assist the parties in developing strategies and programs to achieve Growth Management Act housing goals. So really, a lot of it was about GMA compliance. And cities needed help trying to navigate the world of the changing landscape of GMA. So really, that's what one of the original intents was. And it sounds like that was a reactive approach. So I think what we're talking about here is shifting gears somewhat and becoming more proactive. Instead of tracking housing and documenting things and trying to find a way to be responsive to a change in state law or county policy, really is trying to help cities get ahead of it while it's changing and making sure we're able to have our voices be informed and heard at those levels, if that...
Yeah, I think those are good points.
Yeah, so thank you for the clarification there. That's what I'm looking for. And then the other part of it then is, leads me to acknowledge that then Arch would be helping city staff to meet the comprehensive plan housing element. That's a tough one for the City of Sammamish at this time for us, so that we actually are certified by King County with our comprehensive plan come, the time that we have to do that. So is that, I mean, in a sense, I'm acknowledging that as a council member that, yes, we need Arch because this is what they're doing for us, and here's the price tag to that.
I would agree with that. And one of the other, I want to say benefits here, is that we're also looking at how to, as part of the strategic plan, and if I'm interpreting it right, is we're also looking at how to better forecast and manage housing that is brought online, right? That if we look, we're looking at a very large volume of affordable housing that is going to be ideally produced in the next 20 years. And as those units come online, how are we managing those and tracking those? And we've had some discussion at the board level around how much staff does that entail Arch ultimately needing in order to keep track of those? And as more affordable housing units are brought online and as the covenants and restrictions on those units are managed by Arch, Arch will need additional staff. So we're going to need to be reporting back to the council annually about sort of what the forecast is and what the budget needs are. Arch is definitely a growing operation, and, you know, I think one of the things I wanted to highlight here is that with this additional policy component, where, you know, we're really starting to try to come, bring cities into more of an alignment than maybe we've been, that there is a cost of a new staff person. And I don't want that to be a surprise later when we're going through our budget and we see potentially a corresponding increase in that Arch contribution.
Hey, David, do you know off the top how many units right now Arch is managing or monitoring? And then if you add the 10% that's going to happen in the town center, do you have an estimate on what that number is or close?
Do you mean within Sammamish?
Yeah, within Sammamish, sorry, just Sammamish.
It's not a large number in Sammamish.
No. But it's, because this was my point that I wanted to make, is that over the last four years, what we've done is provided income or money, revenue to Arch for our sister cities, other cities, to do these big projects, right? And you're going to show us some of those in just a minute, so, all right. Thank you. Sorry.
Devin, Mayor Howe.
Thanks. I do appreciate the point that elected officials feel, well, are removed from the Arch process because I feel very removed from it. And I've always felt that that was intentional because, you know, these seats rotate and change, and what you're doing is something that is permanent, long-lasting, and going out into the future several years. And so that's kind of why I thought it was structured that way. So I'm intrigued by the idea that you're looking for engagement by elected officials, so I'm interested in that aspect. I'm also trying to understand, if you could just give me an example of when you're working with Arch, is it you, David, in Sammamish, working with Arch on our project, let's say? If you had a policy question, for example, around affordable housing, or if you wanted to test our toolkit, our affordable housing toolkit, would you give that to Arch for them to assess, for example, for the work we're trying to do in town center?
So yes, and we do. Understanding that Arch is, was it 16 cities? 15 cities, so, and they do have a limited staff body, right? So we need to make sure our work and our work plan, and I think part of the work plan that you're seeing here, is queuing up that work, but we need to be also very mindful that they have other cities that they serve as well. But yes, we do. We work with them on that. They're one of our partners that we work with.
Right.
Where we are testing things out. And we do appreciate the resource. You know, we've been working with them on the comp plan, we've been... You know, we've been working with them on the comp plan, we've been working on the town center work. They're actually starting a process that I've been meaning to respond to Lindsay on, I just haven't gotten back to her yet, so, on some missing middle or middle housing that they're working on.
Right.
So, it's a partnership, but they do support us as an extension of staff. And that's really one of the ways, at the staff level, that they communicate across staff. So, some of my staff, our department staff, your staff, communicate regularly with Arch. There's also what's called the Arch Liaisons Board, which is really more at the staff level and is really intended to be an opportunity for conversations about how different cities are handling different topics.
Well, and are you envisioning something like the way SCA works in that if it doesn't damage another city, you know, the majority of the cities could go along with an idea or a concept or proposal, so that it maybe doesn't benefit everybody equally, but if it doesn't bring harm to another city, then something could get pushed through. I'm just envisioning the SCA model. Is that kind of what you guys are thinking?
I think that's right. I mean, the board really has that responsibility for how do they want to make recommendations, and they've been very thoughtful and respectful that different cities prefer to receive that information through a different channel. They don't just want it showing up with no context and have a bunch of council members have a lot of questions about something. So, I think we really rely on the board representatives to understand what's the best channel for that, but it is, you know, it isn't like there has to be complete unanimity on every issue. It's here's where we think there's consensus, and let's share this information back.
And I'm assuming that you're networking with other organizations that are like yours, so that we can look at it from a regional perspective, a state perspective? Because I'm assuming there's other organizations not unlike Arch that we would intersect with just on boundaries, correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple organizations that were modeled after Arch created recently that, for example, have elected officials on their board as well as non-elected.
Okay, so they're structured differently.
I think you were right about the intention of how we were set up originally, and that's, there's been a lot of good come out of that, but also, I think, interest in figuring out how we get over those stumbling blocks of sort of chicken and egg of how do you bring up policy issues and how do you advance policy issues without engaging elected officials?
Well, yeah, it's problematic. It just is. But the other part I'm trying to understand, too, is just what, frankly, is the power of Arch? Because, you know, part of the policy work, for example, gives you another leg, if you will, or another arrow in your quiver, or something along those lines, so that when you are in a discussion with a city, do you feel like you're an equal partner? Do you feel like you're the advisor or the mentor, you know, explaining something? Or do you feel like the city can push you around?
Well, I wouldn't say that, but I would say there's a lot of potential power in Arch, and I think that's the power of this region and the voice this region can have when it actually is aligned and kind of with a common message. That's a part of why, again, why it's part of the strategic plan, that we explore that potential and figure out how do you leverage it so that you're utilizing the full potential of being a coalition.
The capacity.
Yeah.
And is the fee dictated by what exactly? Not per capita, is it?
Well, historically, it was per capita. I think a couple years ago, we started to, we started to use a second method in addition to the per capita. Part of what I know is going to be options we want to bring to the board going forward is should we explore some other methods for allocation of dues? I think we're, it's probably time for us to take that issue back up, and so that'll be something when we develop the next year's budget and work plan, we'll bring that through the board.
Okay, and I know that you've had a slide in the past that actually showed everybody's contribution. You don't happen to have that, do you?
I know it's in the materials, so...
Okay, I'll just look at the materials, thank you.
Councilmember Gupta.
Yeah, thank you. So, being a newly elected official, I am also interested in, you know, how to engage with Arch and, you know, what the plans are for the future. I know it might be a bit premature since the strategic plan is still being planned, but I don't know if you can expand on that a little more and talk to us about what you envision there? And, you know, just looking over the materials, very impressed by, in the overview, leveraging $10 for every $1 in local funds, and I think the recommendations for $24, $15 for every $1 of local funds projected. So, I think, you know, housing and housing affordability and availability is a regional issue. It makes sense that we tackle it regionally. So, I think Arch is exactly the sort of model we should be following. But, yeah, I don't know if you can talk about the engagement a little bit?
Yeah, one effort I know that is planned is we do hope to convene, you know, create a convening that would be offered for elected officials as well as staff. This was in our work plan, anyway, to have an event like this probably second quarter this year. And at that time, we would sort of share the finished strategic plan. We would also just do some basic education around affordable housing and kind of a deeper dive into Arch and some of the key issues that you all are working on at the local level. So, that would be coming your way. And then, I think, as far as the rest of the, you know, potential implementation of the strategic plan, if we end up with, you know, direction to continue exploring additional engagement with elected officials, we'd be working with the board to create a calendar of what that might look like, what kind of opportunities are most interest, if it's a lot more of the technical things or more policy issues, and we'd be building that kind of work plan out.
Councilmember Lamb.
Oh, thanks, Lindsay, for the presentation. You guys do an incredible amount of work for just 12 full-time employees. My question is just around the Sammamish work plan. So, looking at the other cities, they all vary, and of course, because all cities are different. And I guess I was just curious, is this, the items on there, do they come up in discussion with David Pyle? I was just curious and how those were decided on.
Our process is to reach out to member staff and ask what do you forecast is going to be the work topics that you think you'd need Arch support on. We're typically doing that, like, the first half of the year, projecting for the next calendar year, so sometimes there are unanticipated things that come up after that that we didn't bake into the work plan, and we just try to adapt as best we can. But it is a process where the city identifies the needs for us.
Where does Arch fit in into the town center, David? Like, what kind of support would Arch be providing there?
So, Lindsay mentioned a model that Arch staff with the, with support from consultant had put together about what type of trade-offs would there be to get deeper affordability and to deliver affordable units? And that is one of the exact goals of the town center amendment process. So, we will be looking at that model in addition to working with our economist who we have on that project. So, that is definitely part of the puzzle. The, you know, the, one of the fascinating things about Arch is if you look at the makeup of the membership, every city is so distinctly different, and that's one of the challenges, I think, for Arch staff also, is understanding the needs and nuances of every community. So, we do have to collaborate quite a bit to make sure we're providing ample context when we're working on projects, so that we can account for the difference in how we might do it as compared to how Kirkland or Bellevue might do it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any idea on what Sammamish is going to have a cool project like that? I want to see a photo. Yeah, come on, Scott. No, I'm really excited about the work. I think it all looks great. I think it is, yeah, Arch is definitely a mystery to me. So, I'm like, it's great, I love it, these projects look, you know, but like, you were saying, Deputy Mayor Howe, too, I'm not, I never really understand, because I know, David, you're probably super involved or staff.
Yeah, no, I attend monthly board meetings.
Yeah.
We have lots of conversations with Arch staff, and we also have liaisons that attend the liaison meetings. I think, you know, with this council's feedback, that one of the areas of opportunity that I see with the strategic plan is that, you know, thanks to the state and thanks to the county, there's been a lot of headway with regard to affordable housing. Doesn't mean we're delivering it faster necessarily, it means that the policy wheel has been put in motion that ultimately should result in regulation that is more favorable to the delivery of affordable housing units. So, one thing that I think would be a really great opportunity with Arch is to help look for, you know, we have still some level of siloed policy and regulation, right? Even from the state and the county. So, to look for commonality across those and to look for, help look for areas of opportunity where we could really leverage the city, the city's dollars, working with developers, I think is a really, would be a really great addition. Not that you're not doing that now, but really focusing on that going forward, because the policy wheel has been set in motion, that's already been done, thankfully. Now, we just need to figure out how to fine-tune it and how to get to where we need to be to start seeing these units being built and set the climate right so that they're being built. So, that would be my feedback at the Arch board meeting with regard to the strategic plan. And I, you know, I feel that that would really help move us to the next stage, which is going to be implementation.
No, that's great. And I think for the questions that, you know, I don't really have comments or concerns, but I definitely agree with expanding Arch's role. I think you're going to have to, probably, with all the new bills and everything coming. So, yeah, I definitely support that and would love to see how we can get involved, not, I guess, that's kind of, if you ask politicians to get involved, maybe that's not the best. But we would love to be involved if we can be helpful. So, does anyone else have any comments or questions, or if anyone would like to make the motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, I move to approve the resolution, including as Exhibit 1 in this evening's agenda package, confirming the Arch 2024 budget and work plan in accordance with the Arch interlocal agreement and consistent with this evening's presentation.
Second.
All right, moved in second. Any comments or questions? I can't see Councilmember Lamb, so if she's good, then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, so 5-0 for that one, Resolution 2024-1041. Next up, we have the trust fund.
Great, so I'm hoping to keep the presentation somewhat brief, but wanted to recap a bit about the program, I think, for those that need a refresher or that are new to it. The trust fund has been around since about as long as Arch has been around. It's the effort to pool local resources together into a flexible pot of funds that can go to a whole wide range of projects. You can see here on the map where they've been distributed. We've done a pretty good job, would love to have more in Sammamish, but we've done a pretty good job of creating those opportunities in just about every community. Go to the next slide. We often get a lot of questions about the process and how it works and why you're being asked to approve, what you're being asked to approve. So, this year, I decided I would do it once, you know, once over around, here's how it works. Each year, you will determine in your city budget, on a voluntary basis, how much you'd like to put into the program. We collect that information in the first quarter of the year to sort of verify the contributions and do the billing process. Second quarter, we're working on doing outreach to potential developers and applicants, letting them know how much funding we think we're going to have available that year. Sometimes we'll get a little bit of additional funding in from loan repayments, if we're lucky. And then, we advertise our funding guidelines and receive applications in the third quarter. We have a community advisory board that the executive board appoints, made up primarily of residents, but also people who work in East King County and have either specialized expertise or interest and passion for affordable housing. They work really hard to develop recommendations around which projects to fund, how much to fund, whether any are partial awards, and then the particular conditions that go with the money, sort of whether it's a loan or grant, what the affordability requirements should be that come along with our money. And then, the next, sort of the next, first part of the next year, those recommendations make their way back to you by way of approval from the executive board, kind of giving you, here's our final recommendations on what contracts this money is going to go into. So, our interlocal does require at that step that you actually approve Bellevue entering into those contracts on your behalf. So, they hold an account for every city, but we do not enter into any of those contracts until the city councils actually approve. So, it's, it comes full cycle, and so by the time we're asking you to approve the contract, the money's already been there, you know, for the better part of the year, and you're already in the process of determining what's, we're figuring out what's the money for the next year. So, they tend to overlap, the cycles overlap, and sometimes that creates confusion, but this is sort of the clean cycle of how it gets from, you know, your contribution to the program to here's the project it's going to go into, and then we go do the work of the contracting. So, with that, I can go to the next slide. This year, we had about 4 million in contributions from all the different members. You can see that distribution in the pie chart there. We were able to secure an additional couple million from City of Redmond this year. We knew pretty early in the process, we had insufficient funds by quite a bit to fully award all of the applications, and a couple of the larger projects were located in Redmond. So, we were in kind of coordination with them early on, whether we could help fill some of those gaps. The sources primarily are coming from general funds historically. Many of our members, including Sammamish, are also now collecting a sales tax credit. Those are the 1406 sales tax funds. And again, we also get some loan repayments from time to time. So, that's sort of the makeup of the fund. And then, as I mentioned, we had quite a number of requests this year, so seven applications asking almost 12.9 million in funding for that initial four that we had. But the exciting thing is creating a lot of housing and opportunities to make a pretty big dent this year.
So, when you look at these numbers, I think it's really important to remember that this is just a fraction of the cost of actually delivering those projects. So, if you think about a bucket, we need to fill the bucket with funding, and we're a part of the, you know, the layering in that bucket. So, just want to make sure we're all aware that these projects cost much more than what you're seeing here.
Yeah, very good point. I think we can go to the next slide. So, I just have a few, couple slides sort of summarizing the projects as a whole. This one sort of tells you what the levels of affordability are in all the, in all the projects that are being recommended. Majority of it is housing affordable at that 50% of the median income and below. We also had a nice share of that housing being family-sized units, two and three bedrooms, which tends to be harder to produce. Can go to the next slide. And then, this beautiful rainbow chart shows you how we go about leveraging that local dollar. And in this case, if we count both the Arch trust fund resources as well as a separate funding program we administer for Bellevue, that's called their Housing Stability Program, those combined leveraged $15 for every local dollar. That comes from the federal level, the tax credit program being the most significant source of equity. We're able to leverage private debt, which in recent years has increasingly included some new investors like Amazon. And then, state and county funds are another really important piece of that puzzle, as well as some other miscellaneous sources. So, just to summarize the recommendations, and because there's a lot of projects, I wasn't planning to go through each one, but there's a really great mix of projects this year, both some larger new construction developments right near Light Rail Station, so one in Redmond, one in Bellevue, a project that we're providing some small seed money to up in Kenmore, a senior housing project. And then, we have a couple of preservation projects. And then we have a couple of preservation projects that are existing housing and opportunity to extend the useful life of those projects and keep them habitable for the residents there. Couple others we weren't able to get to this year that may be able to reapply in the future, so you may see them again. But we also expect likely a couple of those others that we're awarding this year, that we could only do a partial award, may also come back. And so this was sort of an indication of our early commitment to those and making sure that they are able to proceed and hopefully have the projects move forward. So I think that's where I was planning to stop, but also happy to take questions if there's any on a specific project.
And if I could add in here that, you know, the process is really pretty amazing to see unfold. You know, you have the community advisory board that is reviewing the proposals, working with staff. They then make a recommendation to the Arch board. The Arch board asks questions of the community advisory board representatives that present to the board. And then from there, there's a motion made by which the board recommends funding. So there's quite a bit of work that goes into this, and, you know, spending time on the board, I'm really impressed with the community advisory board. You know, these are people that are really asking questions about what the best value is and where the best location is and what the project will bring to the portfolio. So, you know, it's pretty amazing that we're part of this process.
Deputy Mayor Howe?
And to your point, I think the place where elected officials could actually participate or at least get a valuable education is, would be as either participants in the advisory committee or being helpful in terms of helping to vet some of those applications. Just speaking from experiences, I was working on the CDBG grants, for example, with very limited funds, because it drives home the point, you only have $2 million. You got to, you've got to be fair, and these got to be really strong submittals. And what it forced, of course, are very well-vetted, intelligent questions and projected, you know, good answers for those questions, so that you have a really nice litmus test about how you're going to match people up. But it's a great way to pull elected officials in so that they get it, and you get it right away.
That's an interesting, interesting idea. We do have, in addition to the community advisory board, we also have a touch point with city staff as well. So they help with some of that vetting and generating questions that help, help with the evaluation process. That's been really valuable for us to have that. So it's an interesting idea.
Councilmember Lamb?
So I've asked this question in the past, maybe of David, but maybe it was you, Lindsay, when you came here last year. And I mentioned that we have four Arch projects that have been built in the past here in Sumamish. I believe I was told that it's the cost of land that makes it very difficult to build here in Sumamish. And so looking at the projects, the seven that are here, you know, they're in Kirkland, and they're in Redmond, and Bellevue, and the cost of land there is equally as expensive, too. And not all of them are transit-oriented, which fits into Sumamish. So, you know, we have 2,000 affordable units, and obviously, not all of them can be in the town center. And so I just, like, how, how are we going to build these affordable units? You know, I guess I'm still trying, I'm still grappling with that.
Yeah, it's, it's because it's a hard, it's definitely a hard topic. A couple of the projects here, the two largest projects are on surplus property that's being donated by Sound Transit. So there, there was a significant discount there, and that helped with the feasibility, for sure. That said, we've also done many projects on that required purchasing private property at full market value, and that's, it's not, it's not impossible. It adds to the price tag at the end of the day, and sometimes the amount of public funds that have to go into it. I think it's, you know, we're working hard with Bellevue on the same issue, and just, you know, they also struggle to find land and opportunities to cite affordable housing. It's the combination of the price of the land, the availability of the land, and the availability of the properly zoned land. So all those things come together, and I think the more you have land that's zoned appropriately for affordable housing, the easier it might be. But it's going to be a challenge, I think, regardless, and that's why we often look to strategies that take advantage of public property that's been underutilized or surplus for some reason.
Is that where we're at, David? Looking at land that could be donated, city land?
Thank you, excuse me, Councilmember, I'll take that one. Because this is a broader conversation that we're going to have, and I think Deputy Mayor Howe brought this up at the retreat on Saturday. You know, we would be looking at all options, whether it's property the city currently owns, whether it is partnerships with other properties like Metro, or it is trying to work with other, some faith-based providers about seeing if they want to possibly reimagine how they utilize their properties. I think we have to look at all of those, and it, even with all that, the entry point is pretty steep overall. And so this is going to have to be, it's a longer-term play, and it is also recognizing that there's a difference between affordable and low-income and very-low income, and the price point at which it's easy to get an actual builder versus purely nonprofit builders. It changes the dynamic of what you can possibly get done, and not us, not the city, but to bring, to be able to bring the market in, it requires multiple partners as well to get something like this off the ground. And this is where, to bring it full circle, if I, if I may, that having an organization like Arch is really beneficial for us to leverage their experience and their connection points to help put us in positions to try to be successful. If we get to a point of saying, we think we can, we want to go after something here and try to find partners to get to success. I think if we were to ask the folks from Kenmore, I think there's 12 different funding sources, and I think it took a considerable number of years to get to a point of actually being able to get a project done. So I think all those, this is, it's a regional problem, it's a national problem. And so for us, getting our policy pieces in place and then taking and trying to, starting to implement the comp plan after it's been adopted and the housing diversification toolkit, that's where we can start to make some headway and identify where those opportunities exist.
Great, thank you for that, Scott.
Deputy Mayor Howe?
All right, I just have one more general question. Are you able, is Arch able to track projects that you may not have in your purview? I'm thinking of in particular of a faith-based organization with a very large tract of land out of Willow's Road, who is just in the baby steps of exploring right now. And I don't know if they're talking to Arch, I don't know if they, when they talk to Arch, if you've got, you know, have a map where you're thinking this might happen or that could happen? Because part of it is having that holistic view.
Yeah, I'd say that's definitely something that we have done in the past, is not just provide advice to cities, but also advice to landowners or developers who are trying to figure out whether there's an opportunity to put a project together. We've had, I think, a number of different churches that are a part of the projects we have funded, that have been able to utilize excess land. We, it's sort of organic how those connections are made. It's one of the areas of the strategic plan. I think we're trying to figure out how do we create more capacity to support those. We have a whole number of churches that are right now throughout the region interested in this. Bellevue recently went through a process to rezone, offer zoning bonuses and density bonuses to many of the faith community properties in the city. So that's prompted some more. We're working with Issaquah on a similar opportunity, Redmond as well. So there's many of, I think, a lot of opportunities there. Maybe we don't have quite enough capacity to support every single one, but we try, we try our best to meet those needs and figure out when there's a real readiness to engage with us. And usually, it's after there's enough deliberation that there's consensus that, yeah, affordable housing is something that a congregation wants to do, and sort of understanding of all the trade-offs, so.
Would you then also help them with the fallout from that? So there is the inevitable pushback that will occur. So do you assist with that aspect, or are they on their own?
I mean, we try to give very realistic advice about what it means to take on a project like this. We connect folks with other communities that have gone through the experience, so they can sort of learn from each other. We also have the ability to connect with technical, other technical assistance providers that, for example, right now, there's a faith-based development initiative nationally with enterprise community partners that's created a whole cohort of communities that are working together, going through the process together and kind of holding hands and sort of learning from each other. So there's quite a few resources I think we can connect folks to, but I don't, I don't know that we solve all the problems, so.
Right, okay, thank you.
All right, Council, does anyone else have any questions or comments or would like to make a motion?
Deputy Mayor Howe? I move to approve the resolution, is this the right one?
Yep.
Okay. We would approve the resolution included as exhibit one in this evening's agenda package, authorizing disbursement of the city's portion of the Arch trust fund in accordance with the Arch interlocal agreement and consistent with this evening's presentation.
All right, moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Well, thank you so much, Lindsay. I assume you'll be back next year?
Awesome.
Awesome. Great. David, do you have anything else for us?
I do not, thank you.
Awesome. Great, thank you. I think we've done 13, we've done council reports, we've done city manager report, I think we're ready.
Can we do it?
Yeah, yeah.
Move to adjourn?
Ken Shaw.
Second.
Yeah, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, good night, everybody, thank you.